Hearing none. We'll move on to the second item. Although we are a minute or two late, if that's all right with, or early, with the applicant to proceed at this time. A continued public hearing on the municipal conversion permit, as I had mentioned before. And in particular tonight, we're going to be hearing about a traffic report that was done as part of getting information about this particular project. And I'll turn, at this point, the meeting over to the applicant. If you have anything you'd like to say, Mr. King?
Mr. Chairman, I want to thank you for having us here tonight. And we're very excited about this development. And we think that our proposal will be something that the town of Foxborough will be proud of, will be proud of, and the patrons and people that live in our building will be proud of. We have put together a great team of Bill Buckley with Bay Colony Group Engineering, Doug Anino with Anino Architects, myself with Douglas King Builders, and Matt Light has, and his wife have joined in to be part of it. And they're, live in Foxborough, and they wanted to be part of this development and are great team members, great friends. We've done deals with them before. And I think it will be, it's good to bring someone younger into, for the management and continuation for the next, hopefully, 50 years. This type of development, we have done in Foxborough, in Walpole, Easton, Norton, Brockton, most of the towns around that we're doing. In fact, we're doing a reuse of a fire station, Fire Station Two in Easton now, as part of a larger development we did for, it was like linkage that we had to do that one. And we're now 75% finished and approximately the same size. So if anyone wanted to see, it's 85 Depot Street off of 138. But our team is very excited about this development and think that it will bring vitality and life into the commons and the center here. And it will be something that, not only for the people in the center, but also for the surrounding towns and stuff. We are going to put probably 50% cash, and then we'll borrow when the construction starts. With, I gave a letter to the town, which I submitted to you. We have our account, the balance would $365,000 after the deposit and the initial $2,500. We'll pay, once we get the permits, we'll close right away. And we've done the 21E remedial engineering, and we're ready to stop. But we don't want to start it if we're not going to be the chosen team. And we want to do a good job, and we're proud of what we do, and not just building it, but managing it. And all of us want to reinvest into the community, have, from when we've been here probably at least a dozen years with the Foxborough State Hospital. And we're been a good partner with the YMCA and other groups that need a helping hand. And the Light family and the Buckley family have also been very good to the communities that they work in. So we just want to get going.
Do either members of the board have any further questions at this point for Mr. King?
Not at this point, I don't.
Mr. Gallagher, you have somebody with you to present us some information on a traffic review?
My name's Chris Gallagher, I'm the town engineer. The last time Mr. King and Bill Buckley were before the board, there was a request to get additional information on the traffic revolving around the proposed project. So Par Corporation had already done some study around the common for us, traffic-wise. We decided to continue to use Par. You've received a report from them. It is all-encompassing around the common. There is a section in there specifically about this project. I have Tim Thompson with Par Corporation here tonight. He's going to take five to 10 minutes, go through the piece of that report that deals with this project and with this proposal, and hopefully answer the traffic questions that were discussed previously and that the board may have. So with that, I'll turn it over to Tim Thompson with Par Corp.
Thank you, Chris, and good evening, members of the board. As Chris mentioned, my name is Tim Thompson. I'm a traffic engineer with Par Corporation. So Par Corporation was tasked, as Chris mentioned, by the town to assess the traffic impacts associated with the proposed development at 40 South Street slash 21 Market Street. Again, as Chris mentioned, we are currently undergoing a study as well for the common in its entirety, looking at potential traffic improvements throughout the common. So it is an area that we are very familiar with. It's an area that we've done a lot of data collection as part of the general common study that we used in this assessment of the proposed development as well. So just to make sure everybody's clear with the, what is included in the development, there's a 4,600 square foot brew pub and restaurant included, and also a 19-unit, one-bedroom slash studio apartment residential component to the project as well. So just so everyone's aware of where the project is located, it's located along the western side of the common, in between Rock Hill Street, Market Street, and School Street, in the area that's highlighted in the figure behind me. The site itself is composed of two buildings. The building that's on the eastern end will house the brew pub and four residential units. The building that's on the west side will house the additional 15 residential units. There's a parking lot that's located in the center of the parcel that, from our understanding, is, will serve the four residential units that are on the eastern side of the site. An additional seven spots will be allocated to the brew pub. There are also 15 parking spaces on the ground level of the building on the western side of the site that will serve the residences only. As I mentioned, we've done some, we've done a significant amount of data collection as part of the overall common traffic study that we're involved with. We did traffic counts in May of 2019. It included turning movement counts at all the intersections surrounding the common. Those turning movement counts were conducted during the AM peak period and the PM peak period, so weekday morning from 7:00 to 9:00 a.m., and then weekday PM from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. Also, as part of that project, we collected 48-hour continuous weekday data along Market Street, just south of Rock Hill, very close to the proposed project site. And those were conducted in May 2019 as well. We've also collected crash data from the Foxborough Police Department for the latest three-year period, and analyzed that as well. Taking a look at what we expect this proposed development to impact, what impact it might have on the addition, adjacent traffic network, we established our future no-build condition. And we projected out to the year 2026, which is a seven-year time period, and that's in conformance with Mass DOT standards. We also, we took the existing traffic count information that we obtained, and we applied a 1% annual background growth rate. Now, what we were able to do to establish that 1% background growth rate is, we had counts at intersections around the common from 2014. We took a look at those numbers, compared them to the numbers that we got from 2019, and established that background growth. We then took a look at the trip generation associated with the proposed development. We used the industry standard Institute of Transportation Engineers Trip Generation Manual, and we looked at comparable land uses that are included within that manual to apply to both the brew pub portion of this development and also the 19 apartments. So for the brew pub portion, we utilized the land use code 932, which is a high turnover restaurant. And then we also utilized the multifamily housing for the residential portion. We then took that trip generation that was associated with the proposed development, and we distributed it throughout the traffic, the transportation network adjacent to the site. So we based that distribution on existing traffic patterns. So we looked at all seven legs of the common, what comes into the common in the morning, and what exits, and what comes into the common in the evening and exits. And we applied those, that same trip distribution rate to the, to the volumes that are associated with the proposed development. Just want to touch a little bit closer on the trip generation associated with the site. So this table behind me splits up the trip generation data into, divides it by the residential components, so the 19 units of apartments, and then the brew pub component. A couple of things I just want to point out in this table. In our analysis, we took a very conservative approach with what was generated by the brew pub. And that's evident with the figures that are shown in the morning peak hour. From what I understand, the brew pub and restaurant is not going to be open during the typical morning peak hour. We did include those numbers in there, again, just to be conservative, but we do expect that those numbers be close to, if not zero. Additionally, for the 24-hour total, those numbers we expect to be slightly higher, again, slightly conservative, given that we don't expect the restaurant component of this development to be open during the morning hour. So just to put a caveat on that and note that we're being very conservative with our assessment. The other item I want to point out is the significant difference in trip generation associated with the apartment component and the brew pub component. And if you look at the trip generation associated with the apartment units and what's to be expected during the AM/PM peak hours, compare that to what's to be expected for the brew pub component, you can see that the brew pub component makes up the majority of trips associated with this site. So after we had our network established, we did what's called a capacity analysis of all the intersections surrounding the common. What a capacity analysis does is we take a look at the existing conditions, and then we take a look at two conditions in the future. One condition in the future, which we call our no-build condition, includes just our background growth. And then the future build condition includes that background growth, and then the additional trips that are generated just by the site. So that really gives you a clear look in the future of what's, what would happen at these intersections with the project and what would happen without the project. So then, a capacity analysis characterizes the intersections based on their, the delay that the intersection experiences. So based on that delay number we have, we classify it into a rating from A to F, with A being an intersection that operates with very low delay, and F being an intersection that operates with significant delay. So without getting too in-depth with the numbers for the results of our capacity analysis, I just have two sections highlighted in each table here. And really, like I explained, what we're trying to do is isolate the changes in level of service associated with the project, comparing that future scenario with the development to the future scenario without the development. What you can see here, we have morning peak hour assessment and our PM peak hour assessment. And what you see with these areas that are circled here is our level of service is the same with the no-build condition versus the build condition for both the AM and the PM. Now, there's a little bit of delay associated, increase in delay associated with the project, naturally, as there's an increase in the volumes. But we aren't seeing any condition on the common that is exacerbated by the additional traffic associated with the project. You will see a couple, several Fs on here. As I noted, we are working with the town to help come up with a solution as part of that separate project that I mentioned. So you'll see there's no additional Fs or additional decreases in level of service associated with the traffic generated by the project. I also just wanted to touch on specifically some of the direct impacts that Rock Hill Street and Market Street are expected to observe with the proposed development. So generally, traffic volumes on Rock Hill and Market Street are expected to be impacted primarily by the residential component of the development. And I'll get into that a little bit more in one sec. But, and then the traffic generated by the brew pub is expected to use parking along the common, and is less likely to impact Rock Hill and Market Street. And as I mentioned before, only seven parking spaces on the site are dedicated to the brew pub use itself. So if you recall what I had mentioned before about the layout of the site, again, this center parking lot is only serving seven spaces that are dedicated to the brew pub. The rest of the spaces on the site are dedicated to the residences. And what we're expecting is the trips that are associated with the brew pub are going to utilize the parking spaces that are around the common. They're going to use existing public parking for the most part, and we don't expect there to be a significant amount of traffic that's going to the brew pub to access parking on the common through Market Street and Rock Hill Street. So we've taken a look specifically at what we expect for an additional increase in vehicle traffic on Rock Hill Street and Market Street, again, isolating that residential component, knowing that they're going to, the residential component is going to be accessing the site from Market Street and Rock Hill Street. And then we also assume that those seven parking spaces will be fully utilized during this period. So what you can see here in this table, during AM peak hour on Rock Hill Street, these are the existing traffic volumes that we have eastbound, westbound, on Market Street, northbound, southbound. They're relatively low traffic volumes. And then we have what we expect the site to generate specifically along those roadways, and then ultimately, the total. So what I just want to point out is that the site generating volumes on Rock Hill Street and Market Street are quite low, based on what we're seeing in our results. And then a column to the right, you can see the overall daily impact that we're expecting to see on these two roadways. So just to conclude, the addition of traffic associated with the proposed development is not expected to have a significant impact on the intersections surrounding the common, as I mentioned before. The majority of traffic associated with, associated with the site comes from the brew pub component. Most of the brew pub parking will be on the common, limiting the impact to Rock Hill and Market Street. And also, the proposed development, it will increase traffic volumes on Rock Hill and Market Street. However, these volumes are relatively low, and we do not expect a significant impact to the existing conditions on those two roadways. So that is a summary of the study that we conducted. If anyone has any specific questions for me, I'm...
Okay. Any questions from members of the board we'll start off with, and then I will open it to the people that are here.
So in your conservative approach that you took, and based on your assumptions, what's the percentage over what you, what you would think is realistic? Because typically, we see the conservative approach versus what actually ends up happening once a development opens. It's usually about 60%, sometimes even lower, of what the, what the Transportation Engineer Trip Generation Manual will portray. I understand you have to take that conservative worst-case scenario. But in this, we know that it's the not, not the residential component that's going to be generating the traffic, it's the brew pub. And the second part of that question is, how many vehicles per seat is being calculated for the restaurant?
So to answer the first part of that question, the PM peak hour we looked at, I do not expect to be overly conservative. Like I had mentioned, the trip generation rates that we use come strictly from the manual, they're based on empirical data that's collected throughout the country over many, many years. So I do not expect the PM to be overly conservative. The AM, as I mentioned, with the fact that the brew pub is not expected to be open to the public during the morning, I expect the morning to be very conservative. There will still be some trips associated with the brew pub if you have, you know, staff that's, that's working on setting things up in the morning and so on. So there will be a small portion, but not anything as significant as what we included in our analysis. And then for the second part, I believe that the proposed brew pub has 134. So we are, so during the PM peak hour, we're showing 98 trips. So that's, that includes both trips to the pub and from the pub. So if you're looking at a per-seat number of trips, we're at about .4 roughly, within that, within that one hour. And these, this is, this is on average as well, so.
Thank you. Mr. Borsey, I see you here, representing yourself and perhaps the planning board. Do you have any questions?
Actually, you're representing the planning board, I'm sorry.
Okay. Are there any questions that you might have, sir? Do we have any members of the public that would like to speak? Understand that tonight is specifically targeting the traffic and parking conditions that we're discussing.
I just have a question.
Yes, miss.
So you're estimating 49 cars if it's 98 trips? Is that what you mean?
So a trip is either a trip to the site or from the site. So it, if we're saying 80, 98 trips, it's a combination of both of those trip ends, if you, if you will.
Do you recall how many spots are around the common?
I do not have that, that figure.
So assuming that there are 36 spots, I'm wondering, was any of your evaluations done when anything else was happening around town, like anyone was at the theater or?
Our traffic counts were done on typical weekdays. I understand that, you know, that if, based on events that are occurring within town, there might be peaks in traffic. But generally, when we conduct a traffic study, we try to find typical condition to assess.
Okay. So this is more traffic than parking, your study?
What we particularly looked at, correct?
Okay. Thank you.
My, my, my chairman, I have some numbers here. On-street parking total downtown is 171. Public parking, including town hall, library, Central Street, is 130. So, I mean, that's just the two. And then we have others that are kind of mixed use, but this is just to give us street numbers on those spaces.
Yes, miss.
Hi, Linda Shay, 20 Market Street. So I'm a little confused. This was not on the agenda tonight, so I don't understand why we're talking about traffic because it's not on the agenda for a traffic study review. I mean, the market, you know, the project is...
We're only talking about it with respect to this topic.
It seems like he was doing all of it, though. So I was just going to say that when Chris, the last time this came, Chris Mitchell was chair, and I can remember at the discussion, it was said that we should have a meeting with the residents that live on Rock Hill. And so I'm confused because you're talking about, the paperwork that I was just handed has the whole common evaluated.
Let me just jump in, there's one section in here specific to this project, so we're not...
So that's the only thing we're talking about?
Yeah, we're not talking about the whole making Market Street one way or any...
Yeah, we're just going like, what?
Yeah.
Okay.
But it is important to point out that it's all intricate, it's an integral part of the entire process.
Yes, but so I'm a little confused.
But there is a, there are...
We have a meeting with residents.
But there is a very specific section of this that speaks to this issue.
And it's, you know, I can remember at the other meeting, it was a, you know, conversation about one way up or one way down. Well, this still says one way up to the common, and I know the Orpheum had some concerns about that. And so I know that's how it got, Chris, you were the chairman, you said, we need, I think you need to have a meeting with residents. So I was just a little confused being handed this when we didn't have those meetings.
Yeah, so they, Chris was getting a whole traffic survey done. It got brought up at the last discussion about this proposal to kind of see if we could get some, some traffic's data and piggyback on that.
Okay, so we're only talking about that.
And what we're talking about tonight is just what this site is going to generate.
And if I may, just to clarify, so everybody knows, we did just get this, and we are planning on going, well, meeting with residents, going front selection, doing this whole, whole downtown thing over the next month or so. But this is just brand-new news to us as well.
Okay. Yes, sir.
Well, I'm Shay, 20 Market Street. Just an observation, I see that you did the study on May 7th and 8th. It's a Tuesday and a Wednesday, and this is a study about traffic impact? I'm not an engineer, as you are in this, but for me, if I was going to study a traffic impact, I think I'd select the Friday and Saturday. That's where the impact is. That's when the activity will begin. There's very few things happening in the affected area on a Tuesday or a Wednesday, unless it's something special. So, just a point.
Mr. O'Leary, may I, may I comment on this?
Certainly.
Okay, when we started this study for the comprehensive traffic flow of the common, it was late April, early May. We were trying to do comprehensive study, including school buses and daily traffic, and that's where these numbers came from, because Power was running at that point. So what he's now focusing on is just those, that data on the traffic flow of the common itself. And on weekday traffic, you're getting, you know, employees coming home from work.
But I would think that the brew pub will be busier on Friday and Saturday night, so there'll be more trips.
So I think, as I stated probably a couple of times at previous meetings about planning and selection, as a resident and a voter, I'm not really concerned with traffic flow. Traffic drives by, by definition. I'm concerned with those that stop, i.e. parking, that we have adequate places. I know that there's been a study, and I know that the numbers say it supports that. I'm just voicing the concern and the observation from the very beginning, so we don't make any errors that can be corrected at this point.
Mr. Chairman, just with due respect to the gentleman's comments, one of the process, one of the procedures required of this permit process is a traffic study. So this is, this is a requirement of the process, so that's the reason why it has to be reviewed. All right, so, and due respect to the, also the comments about Friday and Saturday, let's also note, too, that traffic is different on weekends as it is on during the week. And perhaps the engineer could address that issue, but I think it's important that you have different traffic patterns on a Saturday than you do on a Wednesday, due to the work letting, letting out, things of that nature. It may be a little bit of a challenge on Friday night, but certainly Saturday would be a different pattern.
That's absolutely correct, yeah. The typical engineering, traffic engineering studies look at Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday data as the most representative of typical days. Specific to the use of a brew pub, I agree Friday nights and Saturday nights are expected to be, you know, the busiest nights with those types of establishments. However, on a Saturday, there's generally lighter traffic throughout the entire transportation network that limits or reduces the impact that a use such as a brew pub would have at that particular time. Also, again, to point out, we did not have any Saturday data that was collected as part of the ongoing common project. But from what we have observed through looking at this location, general weekday PM tends to be the worst condition that we've seen.
Any other in the back, miss?
Hi, I'm Captain Green, 35 Coopass Street. I know you made comments about the effect on various intersections and the delays as they come in. And the numbers you're comparing, in one case, you're showing that we currently have a situation that puts a number of those in the, for five out of seven or eight, already in the F category of long delays, and that this project would have no significant... in the F category of long delays, and that this project would have no significant effect because we have the same number of F delays. What significance can any of those numbers have? And you're basically saying it's already on fire, but adding fuel isn't going to be significant, whether it's a drop of fuel or a gallon of fuel. Do you have any projection? I mean, it's hard to do. You're, we're also looking at the overall situation, trying to fix what's going on now. But those numbers aren't very meaningful when we're already at a delay to know what the, this effect is perhaps insignificant.
I, so, just to reiterate what we've been looking at as part of the study, we are, we did take a look at the impact of the proposed development on the existing Common conditions and the conditions proposed as part of some of the modifications that we're looking to implement. So within the full report, there's an assessment of both sets of future conditions, if you will. But in general, you know, we know there's some issues at the Common that are trying to be resolved. So being able to look at this project and identifying that it's not going to create any new problems was something that we took into account when providing this study.
So presenting this is it's not creating anything new. Of course, not. I think that really does completely obscure the actual effect of this project that you're hoping to have, considering... Thanks.
Yeah, I mean, another thing that we look at is just the general amount of traffic that's already on the existing network and compare it to what's proposed as part of the development. And this development makes up a very small portion of the overall traffic volumes, so we can look at it from that respect. And also, when you start to look at intersections that have extensive delay, there's a little bit less reliability in comparing apples to apples with adding new volume. The models that we use and the analysis that is what's practiced tend to make things a little bit worse than what we actually see sometimes, so...
But also, in combination with the idea of the statement, saying that you don't see that, and don't plan that to be traffic pushed onto Market Street, for instance, well, especially if we already have congested intersections and if there may even be a little bit more, or there are going to be new vehicle trips trying to navigate that, you're going to go looking for someplace else, a relief, and that is going to push them into those neighborhood streets, which perhaps wouldn't be part of the optimal traffic pattern that you could plan on, but at this point, that's exactly what's going to push them into those neighborhoods, people looking for someplace to go, whether it's to escape a bad intersection or find a place to park.
Any further questions or comments that anyone wants to make? Any further issues that you gentlemen might have?
One other question. What's the average turnover per hour in a restaurant with your trips? You know, is there a...
I don't have that information. I can tell you that, you know, what's provided in the Institute of Transportation Engineer's handbook for different land use codes, you know, there are, there are different types of restaurants that you can look at. The one that we chose to use was a high turnover restaurant. So given that description and comparing it to other types of restaurants, like, you know, more like fine dining, if you will, that high turnover one, I would say, is probably a little bit conservative, given the nature of what I expect to be constructed on this
If there's no other, oh, Mr. Arthur what?
If I may, I don't see Baker Street mentioned anywhere. Every afternoon, bumper to bumper of cars that finally leave Main Street because they can't get downtown. All the streets to the right of Main Street have been declared local traffic only. No such consideration on the left side of the street, so every afternoon, we have that. And the cars coming up Bird Street, if you live in that area, you don't even think about going uptown after 3:00 in the afternoon. Has this been taken into consideration?
We did look at the intersection of Bird Street with the Common as part of this assessment, so we did analyze that intersection. Specifically, cut-through traffic or delay on Baker Street itself is something that's being looked at as part of the overall Common project.
I heard for the first time tonight some numbers about parking lots. Could you repeat that, parking availability?
On-street parking, 171.
On-street, meaning just in the general area of that?
Yep.
171.
And the public parking, which includes Town Hall, Central, the parking lot behind Central Street Businesses, and the library, that includes 130.
130.
Those are the numbers that you had.
That's it.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman. Paige, does that include the new lot, the Snyder lot, as well?
Actually, no, that probably doesn't, now they mention it.
So there's additional 43 spaces there?
So we have additional 43 that I believe came online today.
Not yet. There's one, there's a piece that still has to be done.
Okay.
But it will be within short order.
Maybe we want to update on that, just give an update on that right now.
So the town has reached an understanding agreement with Snyder Electric to have a license agreement which will allow us to utilize 43 spaces of their parking lot for public use. And that area has been delineated, defined by Public Works. We put new signage out there, we've lined the parking lot, and we've, we're going to actually have to put some blocking-type devices in the parking lot to keep, to separate, to create a demarcation line between their parking and our parking. And that remaining piece is the only thing that's remaining to be done, and we'll be utilizing those spaces probably within the next week or two.
Any other comments or additions that anyone would like to add?
Excuse me. Hi.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm a property owner on Market Street. Fran Kleindt's...
You may want to come to a microphone, ma'am.
... property on the corner of Market and Centennial Street.
Excuse me, ma'am, you may want to come to a microphone because this is a public hearing, so... Thank you.
Hi. My name is Fran Kleindt. I'm from Foxborough, but I own the property on the corner of Market and Centennial. I travel back and forth from Rock Hill Street from the Common to go down to Market Street. Lately, there have been cars all the way down Rock Hill Street in front of the Orpheum Theater, and especially during Orpheum events. It's very congested, there's barely enough room for another vehicle to travel down that way. Never mind if a car is coming up from the bottom end of Rock Hill or Market onto Rock Hill approaching the Rotary. So I don't know what your plans, if you studied that specifically, as far as letting vehicles continue to park there. They've never been able to park there before, and all of a sudden, they're there. So that was my concern right now. Thank you.
Again, I think that's going to be part of the bigger comprehensive study for the Common and the side streets. That'll be, we'll be having a public meeting hopefully soon on that.
Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor? Is there any action that the board might wish to take at this time concerning this applicant in front of us this evening?
Yeah, I'll make a motion. And before I make the motion, I just want to clarify that if this is approved, it's not an approval of a site plan review. This is just an approval of the conversion of municipal use to commercial use. That's all this process is. They'll still have to go through the normal development process, through the planning board, and site plan review, and everything else, so just want to make sure everybody understands what's going to happen.
Mr. Chairman, before, just before our motion is made as well, I think it's important to note, too, that the requirements of the permits say that the board may make conditions as part of this motion as well, and that, again, it is important to point out that this is strictly one step in the process, it's not the final process.
I move to approve the municipal conversion permit to Douglas Lake King for the two properties located at 40 South Street and 21 Market Street, as per the Town of Foxborough Bylaws, Chapter 275, Zoning Section 7.1, Municipal Conversions.
All in favor? Matter is moved forward, then, for the applicant to receive the conversion permit.
Correct. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Chairman, do you have any other actions before the board tonight?
Not that I'm aware of, sir.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
All in favor.